... Please rise to the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm honored to remain standing for a moment and just, I think it would be appropriate if you just take a moment to think about these unfortunate people that went through this horrific event. Carol, sit over the weekend, please.
Sure.
Carol's question. Thank you. No problem, please, Carol.
Mr. Delmoreton? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Morris? Here. Mr. Nelson?
Here. Is there any sense of participation, see? Any agenda adjustments? Okay, here and then, and move on. Next up, the ISD, the top of student growth reading. I believe that's the vanilla folder we have in front of us.
Well, kind of. The vanilla folder has a lot of things in it, too. She's got a...
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
How are things going tonight?
Good.
Good. Last time I was here, we talked a little about curriculum. And Carol told me I had about 10 minutes for that presentation, and it lasted about 40. So she told me again tonight I had 10 minutes, so we'll see how it can do better. Their timeline. So this is actually going to be relatively short. We're just going to kind of briefly go over student growth and student achievement here at Bridgeport, and kind of the difference when we talk about those two things in regards to achievement versus student growth, and kind of what we're looking at. So when we first take a look at it, we'll start with student achievement. When you hear the phrase proficiency or student achievement, basically what we're referring to is this idea that we're setting a bar at a certain level, and it's our expectation on kids to reach that bar in order to be proficient. That's what student achievement is. So for 4th grade proficiency, for example, on the M-Step from 2016 is compared to 4th grade proficiency in 2017. So it goes hand in hand. It's the, you will get the same grade level from year to year. That's considered student achievement. We like to refer to it as comparing apples to oranges when we're looking at student data. And the reason why we say that's not the same case. Your 4th grader from last year has the same goal rate as your 4th year, and their training, and their education, and their process has been completely different. So we use student achievement data to set things like large goals. We look at the trends. How many of you are familiar with my school data? Okay. You can look at trends on this website for student achievement, and I'll show you where you can do that real quick. This is a public site. Right now, the 2016-17 data is still embargoed, so we can't share it with you in a public setting. But if you click on student assessment, here, you have a number of options, from anywhere from the 3rd through 8th grade assessments, which is the M-Step, to high school assessments, which is the Michigan assessments, and then you have college readiness, which would be SAT. So these three bars up here would give you your data. When you click on assessment, you can then select Bridgeport. Select our county. And go to Bridgeport. We'll look at last year's, and we'll take a look at N-Step. And because I referred to 4th grade, we'll take a look at 4th grade. And then you select the content. We'll do ELA with all students. When I hit select, it'll provide you with last year's data here. And you can also select trend here. What this is showing you is proficiency. So how many of your kids reached a certain level for that bar that was set by your state? Hopefully soon, the 2016-17 data will be unbarred, and you will be able to view the trend from last year to this year, and they'll add it to this for a public setting. But right now, we can't take a look at this.
I'm going to call this thing out real quick.
Yeah, we should go into the trend. Okay, so 2011, 12, 2012, 13, and 13, 14, you'll see there's kind of a gap. Those are the old MEEP assessments we used to take. And then the bar to the right, that's the new M-Step, from 14, 15 to 15, 16. Okay? So we're looking at ELA.
Could we dim the lights, please? Maybe that would... You probably have to shut that thing off.
There we go. Movie theater staff.
Is that okay for you?
Yep. So from 14 to 15, your students increased partially proficient. And from, let's see, 14 to 15, there was a slight decrease in not proficient, which is actually what you want to see. Okay? But remember, these are not the same students, and that's where a lot of people get confused. This is trend data for a grade level assessment. So this is 4th grade to 4th grade. Different students, same content, here.
But this is showing progress. This is showing student progress.
Your non-proficient, if you look at the very top, the bright red, your non-proficient, the raw score data is below.
So is there a scale of how not proficient we are? Is it on a scale of 10 to 10?
No. That's not quite how they measure. So this is just raw scores. This is number of students. Okay? So if you look, you had less than 10 students proficient, 16 partially proficient, 71 not proficient. Yeah, there's your raw numbers. That's number of students. Okay, so it's a struggle. There are challenges with this, but I'm going to show you some positives because we're going to talk about student growth. But this year's data is not out to be one of this is a year old as well. So the main task that you, I know this is hard to read, so I'll work with this with you, and I'll make sure you get it counted, but the main benchmarking assessment that the district uses is NWA. So we're talking a different assessment now. And NWA is a benchmarker, which means we give it almost every year to see how students are for that, how are they actually doing. It's research-based, it's nationally used, majority of our schools are counting them. Okay? What they can do for us, they can actually provide prediction reports for proficiency. Now, I'm not talking student growth yet, I'm still talking student achievement, proficiency. It can predict how many students are going to achieve on that Michigan test. It's an outperformance on their test. And from fall to winter this year, there was actually an increase. So there was an increase in saying more kids are going to be proficient, which is good. This is for M-Step from fall to winter. Okay, so we're seeing a slight change in the scores from, in a small six-month period, that they are progressing. I found the same, when I looked at the data, I also found the same for reading. So both in mathematics and reading, we're seeing that there's a greater chance that more kids are going to become proficient here in the reading. Now, student growth, on the other hand, is when we examine how students perform from one assessment to another. So, for example, a child taking the 4th grade proficiency on the M-Step compared to the 5th grade M-Step in 2017. So you're taking the same child, and you're looking from their 4th grade year to their 5th grade. The state provides this for us. It's a student growth percentile. They provide that information for us. It has a difference in scale for 6th and 17th, and you're still looking at it. But I want to show you some positive data, because NWA, the benchmarking test that this, that the district uses, is showing some very positive pieces in regards to student growth. So here's a chart. So this is a 12-month chart. So this is from winter of last year to winter of this year. Okay? Same students. What NWA does is it removes any child that didn't take the same, the test. So these are the same type of students. And what they do is they do a norm reference. So if you see those diamonds, that's the target that we want to see our students growing at. What they do is they take all of the schools in the country, all the kids in that grade level, and they norm reference it, and they average out, okay, if a kid tested here in the fall, in the winter, this is where we want them to be in the following winters. As you can see, and I can let Carol kind of talk a little bit about this if she wants, the majority of your grade levels are hitting where they need to hit in regards to growth.
This only shows the 2nd and 4th grade actually achieving the target.
As long as they put the diamond, they're considered achieving the target. They're almost there with the number of your courses. When I looked at individual students as well. Because, and I can explain this. Here's the sixth month. This is a little bit nicer. So this is this year. Okay? This is from this fall to this winter. About a six-month time period. Okay? So they're making growth. They're making growth based on where they should be.
Now, is that first column...
That first column is kindergarten. So 0, 0 is kindergarten.
So that puts a negative in the zero.
No, they make growth, they just didn't make what the, what the national average of growth rate should be for this group.
And so how would we explain that? Why?
We would have to dig deeper into curriculum, individualized assessment scores, where are the students coming from? Because here's the thing about kindergarten, they're coming from all sorts of different preschool programs, home, you know, childcare providers, there's a lot of different backgrounds going to come to kindergarten. So this is quite normal when you see that. Okay? Because that first six months of kindergarten is a huge adjustment, too. They're experiencing a lot of changes in regards to procedures and that type of thing going on.
I know preschool does make a big difference.
Yep.
Some kids unfortunately have no pre-K, Head Start, early learning, they just jump right into kindergarten.
Certainly, periods of first grades may be up for them.
Yes. They are.
Would this be based on a student having gone to preschool or not?
I don't know. I would have to take each individual student for that.
It would kind of matter if they were looking at some goals that would have been reached in preschool to judge this.
They're testing the students' standard, whether they have attended preschool or not.
Correct.
So, like I said before, they don't differentiate.
It would be very interesting to look at each child and see who went to what program and write it down. We just... Yeah? That, that's...
You can make it up.
Yep.
We know where it is. On that chart, the only grade that did not make any growth is 11th grade going up. It's below.
And as you can see, there's no diamond on the 11th and 12th grade, and that's intentional by NWA. They consider those capstone years, and so they don't put a growth norm reference on those two grades. So that's a positive thing. Now, you're probably wondering, if we're making this much growth, why is our student achievement or proficiency coming out the way that it is? The growth is based upon the students and their abilities. So when they come in, we're testing them, and they're making a ton of growth. They just, unfortunately, because of some of the deficits going on when they come in, as you can see by kindergarten, we have to make a lot of growth here in order to meet that benchmark that the state has set. So while they're making growth, we want to continue to see them surpass that gold diamond. They need to surpass that gold diamond.
Are these growth apartments based on, by district, based on student performance of previous? I guess my question is, are those a nationalized, national standard, or are those based on district performance?
The gold diamond is based on national.
Okay, all right.
Here's, here's reading for six months. So from this fall to this winter, same population of students, so these are the exact same students testing from fall to winter. Carol, is there anything you want to mention about this chart?
So in the, in the reading, the grades that experienced the most chart, most growth, as you can see, was 1st grade, followed by 4th grade. They're, they're both, both grew, well, actually, 1st and 4th experienced most growth. And then followed by 3rd and 5th. And then the least growth would be 9th grade, and of course, 12th. In 12th grade?
Yeah, that would say, yeah, that's going backwards, right?
My prediction, and Jack correct me if I'm wrong on this, but my experience is with 12th graders, when you give them a test, they may not take it seriously. I don't want to use that as an excuse, but that's the only thing I could think of when I saw that 12th grade data. I don't know what your experience was with the test.
I think you have a very good answer, but it's not going to share it here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm obligated to take the test seriously, too.
That's a trend that sometimes happens with 12th graders. They're checked out, but it just depends. I can't speak to why the results turned out that way, but...
But that would suggest that they made negative progress, right?
Yes.
Yep.
They're not, they're not going the way they should.
They're depressed from the progress, right? Let's read that press.
If, if I saw that, I would dig deeper. I see that as an anomaly.
Now, who's, who is, who analyzes this data?
This is the first time that our ISD has had access to the data. Carol was kind enough to share that access with me, so that I could take a look at it. Carol, what is your process for data in the district?
Well, our teachers have had minimal training on analyzing the data, but part of the PD plan for this year is for the teachers to get a lot more training. And then, part of what they do in PLCs is to look at this data, dig deeper. I mean, it makes no sense to just take the test and not do anything with the, with the data. So they'll be digging deeper, looking at the data, and they're making adjustments.
They can individualize student performance on the N-Step. So they can individualize the...
On the NWA? Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, just, understanding this really for the first time, that it would be maybe good practice to have a specific person at least analyze this and put, like, a red flag or something, on something like you said, with them. And I believe it just sticks out as being really something we need to look into immediately in the process. I think that would...
So this is winter to winter for reading. So last winter to this winter. I put the six months versus the 365-day one up there as a reference for you, because I'm finding more and more districts are more interested in the year-to-year. So we want to know here from fall to fall how our kids are progressing because of the summer regression we sometimes see. They want their periods about that, that generally work to them. So we always make sure we take a look at that. So here it is in regards to 12-month per reading.
So the 3rd grade growth is down. What is the 3rd grade proficiency given the 3rd grade reading mandate?
That would be a really good question to answer. And we could...
Do we really need to, do we need to go over data to actually...
Yep. So, one thing we do at ISD is we provide what we call a triangle of data in helping districts. It's good to have three points of data on kids at any given point when you're trying to make instructional decisions for them. And so we have a lot of districts who will use NWA, the M-Step scores, and then a third, whether it's local or another standardized one that they're using in house.
Another thing that is always interesting to me is if 8th grade, they look like they're doing pretty good, but 9th graders always seem to not do as well.
That's a big transition for students, that's part of it. Very similar to kindergarten.
Yeah, it's across the board, across the nation.
Yes.
And it's a problem.
So a couple of things, just in regards to the presentation today, is making sure that proficiency and student achievement is that bar that's set by someone, by some company in regards to all children have to meet this, where student growth really is our kids growing. It may not be fast enough, we may want to speed it up, we want to hear how they're growing, but you can see where they are growing. Anywhere there's a blue bar, they are growing. It's just a matter of what rate they are growing, and are they meeting where they need to be? Where are they exceeding it? Because your proficiencies may not be necessarily where you want them to be, you really need to focus on getting them to surpass that gold diamond, because they need to grow for that. And it's looking at what can we do to help you get there. Couple of things, the ISD is offering NWA training, so it's really important to understand the numbers in the system once you get the test. And so we're offering this series this year for how to read those reports, how can you use this to make instructional pieces. Carol and I asked this folks right before the board meeting in regards to PLC support, and how would we make sure the teachers are using this data to change their instructions? So there, there are some things that we're looking forward to, how they can provide.
This data makes a lot of difference, because I know I'm looking for a second hall in another community, and the villagers just steer you to areas with the schools.
There's lots of sites that are used.
Yeah, the school data is what people are looking at almost before anything when we try to break the loop.
I was out with friends, and they were discussing it. I don't talk about it, but they sit there, and they were having a chat, and it was amazing to me how they were comparing the district's test scores.
So it is amazing.
And all congratulations.
I went to one website, it's called Great Schools.
Yep. That's the primary one.
Yeah, and they do a nice analysis of about achievement and proficiency.
That's definitely our Dr. Major Brooks. Talking about, so, and here's something that I'm going to do here, right?
Yes. So, I'm going to talk about the processes that the District Turnaround Network is going through with the MyXL Blueprint, and talking about some of the things that we have done so far and are going to do through the Blueprint. I am the intervention specialist from the ISD, and I help the district with their blueprint system. And we're going to just kind of update you. I was here last year to talk to you all about what the District Turnaround Network was and what we were going to do. And so I just want to take you through our journey and where we've been in the last year. We launched the Blueprint under different leadership from the ISD, Ron Helmer, if you're familiar with Ron, early in 2016. And then the DTN and, the DTN attended the Blueprint Leadership Network, Leadership Institute last year, and also the Blueprint Institute last year. After that, we came back and there was a switch in ISD leadership, so I became the Blueprint facilitator and intervention specialist for the district in September. So we relaunched our Blueprint efforts under a new IS, whoops, which was me from the ISD. During the course of this year, Carol has attended four superintendent's meetings where she got to work with superintendents from across the state that were in this work at the same point where she, where this group is in the work. All principals from this district were trained in the CLC, which is the Collaborative Learning Cycle Protocol, which now they know how to look at data, analyze data, and then we are, it's coming, I'm going to talk about that, we're pushing that out to staff this year. And the District Turnaround Network this year attended a Leadership Institute and also the Blueprint Institute this summer. Everyone left there, committed to go full force with all of the systems that we kind of put in place throughout the year. So I'm going to kind of talk about that. So in there, in your folders, you have a graphic of the Blueprint that talks about kind of what the Blueprint is. You've looked at this before. And where we are is in the little purple bubble, laying the systems or the foundational work for the Blueprint. Carol also gave you that little colorful skyscraper. So the MyXL team has kind of broken things down into levels. And we are in the mechanical level at this point. And so in this level, or in this phase, the district installs the Blueprint and gets all of the systematic visions in place to go forward throughout the school year. So this is where we are. And this is where we have lived for the last year. So I'll talk about some of the things that we have accomplished. So our catalyzing event, that's like the first thing you do in the Blueprint, is just realizing that we are a district that needs to boost student achievement. Under the Blueprint, they formed a district network. Pat sits on the district network. We have people from central office. This year, we have added some teachers to our Blueprint, Vista Rebecca.
Yep.
Is one of our newest members to the district network. He brings a very strong teacher voice, and we are glad to have him. The district, the first thing they did was have, create a problem-solving driver, which is how to look at data. How we're going to look at data when we are in groups, in teacher groups, in district groups. And so we developed a protocol that we are pushing out to teachers in September. At the PLCs, they'll be able to look at data through a different lens, and also get strength from Rebecca, our principals, get strength from Rebecca, and they've been trained on the Collaborative Learning Cycle on how to look at NWA, M-Step, SAT, and make those critical decisions for kids. So that is coming, and teachers will be doing, engaged in that work. And with the Late Start, they will have time to all come together and do that work. And even if they want to meet across building, they'll have that time so that we can carry that work forward. We also developed a communication protocol, and I'm sure Carol will give you the final drafts of all of these documents of how we communicate in-house and outside. This, about three months ago, we even came up with a hierarchy of communication. When you have a problem and you're a parent, who is it with? Where do you go? All the way up to the board, so that you don't get calls that haven't been followed through Carol, and Carol doesn't get calls that haven't been followed through building principals. Building principals don't get called that haven't been followed through teachers first. And so we developed that system, and that's getting rolled out to the teachers also in September. We also visioned out our talent management, and that's how we go about retaining or employing talent. So we develop teacher profiles, principal profiles, and superintendent profiles. So when we post for a job, or even within the talent within the district, people know what is expected of them. So we've done that work, and that will also be pushed out to the staff in September. Instructional infrastructure is our latest task. So we visioned out what we want high-quality, subject-specific instruction to look like in math, science, English, language arts, and social studies. We went through at our last meeting Wednesday and kind of vetted those, and we are developing a walkthrough tool, and I'll talk about that, that kind of highlights what we've done. So we are now at the last step of the mechanical level, which is our student support network. How do we take care of our students' non-academic needs? What would that look like in Bridgeport? That might be different in Saginaw Township, that might be different in Saginaw City, but what do we see as, what do we need to provide our students with, non-academically, that can take care of them and boost their academic needs? So that's where we are. And we will be finished with visioning that at the end of September, and we'll be out of the mechanical days next year. And we'll be on to some deeper work in the Blueprint, so that's... And we'll be on to some deeper work in the Blueprint, so that's where we are. Any questions on that before I tell you what's up? Okay, so, this is what you should see, September 2017 in Bridgeport. All teachers will receive the introduction to the Blueprint, a three-hour professional development on August 28th, their first day back. So all teachers will be steeped in the Blueprint, they know about it now, but they're like, oh, what is this Blueprint thing? Mr. Becca had a chance, he and about six Bridgeport High School teachers, to go through a two-day institute this summer, where they learned about the Blueprint, so now they can help us facilitate that learning to the rest of the staff, so that's full staff.
And Dr. Brooks, we're doing that first thing on the 28th, right?
Yes, yep, eight o'clock in the morning on the 28th. That feels free to join.
Yeah, I can see if you're involved, too, and I'd just like to.
Yes, yes, and there were, there were some teachers from academic middle and elementary, no, just the middle school, elementary had trained. So all teachers will be given the profiles, so that they will know what to expect, what does a teacher look like in a turnaround district, what are my goals for the year? A funny thing, John was at the Leadership Institute, and he said, I'm going to take this profile and judge myself on it, and see where I need. So John already has his growth markers for this year, he knows what he needs to do to get to that turnaround principle of what he needs to be. He took his own self-assessment, and he took it to heart, and he's, that's his driving force, so. All teachers will be given the copies of the new visions of high-quality, subject-specific instruction, we would have had those today, but we have not put the final set for them. So the DTN is meeting August 16th, they will finalize those, and we want that in your hands, so that you can see what those are. The visions for high-quality, subject-specific instruction. Yes, so if you go into a math class anywhere in Bridgeport, these are the things that you should see going on. If you go into a social studies class, these are the things that you should see going on. So that's, that's what, that was our last speech. So all teachers will receive that. All PLCs will be led using the CLC data protocol. So when they start their PLCs up, they have a protocol form that they will fill out as they leave in their groups about the data and their action steps, that's the very most important piece, what are, what are we going to do about it? So we've looked at it, now what are we going to do about it? And so that adds a layer of depth to what they've been looking at. We look at data, and we tell, oh, okay, we looked at it, now what are we going to do about it? And let's put some dates to that. So all teachers will be using that.
And Dr. Brooks, this is where the two entities overlap and work together. The data that Rebecca just talked about ties into what Dr. Brooks is talking about, that this is the, where the time when we get to analyze and look at that data. Does that make sense, you see how we're all doing this together as a team with the two entities?
And principals will conduct daily walkthroughs. Carol has given them a charge of so many walkthroughs per day, looking at instruction one, in a data protocol form, to know how we're doing on that vision of high quality. And we'll come back to the DTN and say, okay, so, science across the district, how are we doing compared to what our vision statement says science should look like? And then what should we do about it? So it's making those decisions. So principals will be doing daily walkthroughs with those visions. Principals will also engage in monthly conversations with the superintendent around performance management. So the superintendent, monthly, will know what data points are going on in the school, what data looks like, what is the achievement, what are they working on, what are their benchmarks, monthly, so they'll have those conversations monthly with Carol. And the district network has committed to just continue the Blueprint and continue leading the district for student achievement, because that's the purpose. When we get all of our systems aligned, and we get everything in order, then we should see student achievements skyrocket. So, that's my presentation, any questions?
I think that's impressive, because if you were going to a business, a corporation, and they have certain goals, I think this is the way they would address it now, and I think that is what just gives us the thought.
Where are we at at this Institute? Where are we at in relation to other districts that were, that we met last year? How was Bridgeport doing in its implementation compared to some of the other districts?
So compared to many of the districts, we are all around the same place. Some districts that are high-performing are skyrocketing, like the Lincoln Park, like the Hazel Park. We have gone slow to move fast, as Carol said. We've visioned out everything, and that's taken us a while to vision those out, but now we can, once we get through this phase, we can go full force into implementation, because that's when you get into, when you get to reviewing data, looking at it and making decisions, that's when that motor starts running. And so we have, it says four months for this phase, not one district has done that in four months, but if you put 10, they'll take 20. So you set a mark, and then we work towards that mark. We have set a goal, that we will be out of the lobby level, which is the next level, by the end of the school year, I mean, heading into mechanical phase by January, February. That's our mark, that's our target, and we're going to work hard to get there.
No, I mean, it's absolutely, we need to, we need to push on this.
Yep.
And it's, it's something, the sense of urgency needs to, needs to happen with the administrative team, and you guys need to understand, I, as a high school principal with this, I grade it out as a 31 percent, that's not acceptable. It's not acceptable to, to the kids of Bridgeport, to you as a Board of Education, to the staff, Becca deserves a better principal than this. And that's the truth.
I, I just want to, I'm very excited about the work that we're, we're doing. The conversation that we're having in the DTN, I would dare to say, we've probably never had these kind of qual, conversations talking about the goal standards of teaching, what we expect to see in a high-quality reading class, or math class, or science class, or social study. We don't think we have, we, we meet in this room, and there's been times when all of these walls have been full of posters, big posters, where we're mapping out what we need to see, what we need, everything down to when we hire people, what are we looking for? We, we have profiles for Blueprint, a turnaround teacher, a turnaround building leader, a turnaround superintendent. So the goal is, and, and we're not there yet, but we're getting there, and, and it really begins with all of these very rich conversations. The goal is making sure everyone in the district, from all the staff members, and administrators, teachers, and even parents, students, the community, know that we are a Blueprint school, and that we have systems in place. That's the whole point of the Blueprint, is putting systems in place, district systems, building routines, and that's where we're, that's where we're going. I think that's where we misstepped in the past, not getting to where we need to be, both academically and financially, really, not having strong district systems in place. And that's what we're doing with the Blueprint work. For some of us, some of the team are a little impatient, thinking, oh, we need to move fast, we need to, but really, sometimes you really do have to go slow to move fast. I, we're at the, we're in the mechanical level, we're just the bottom, but we're at the top of the mechanical level, and I know, because of all the rich conversations that we have, we're about to, we're about to jettison, I mean, I know we won't get to the top this year, but we're, we are going to move forward very rapidly. Everyone knows, and I, the team is very excited about moving forward. I know John, you can hear it in the voice, he's very excited. Mr. Becca is pretty excited, the other members of the team are pretty excited about moving forward, and we just have to make sure that everyone is on board.
I agree with that, because we're only as strong as our weaknesses. Sure. And if someone is perceived to be a weak link in that chain, you know, you've got to address it, I mean, you just can't sidestep it. That's the nicest thing we can do, is address it to them early enough in the game, so that they can get on board, because it holds everybody.
With all of that said, I'm hoping that the board wants to assure that whoever's in this spot, who's at the helm of the district, or in your spot for that matter, that we will continue this work with the Blueprint, making sure that once we get all these systems in place, we keep them in place, so we will be successful in all aspects of the work that we're trying to do. So I have a resolution, and for some reason, it's a copy that you make it to all of your packets, but if you don't mind, you can indulge me, I can read the resolution. It's next.
It's on the agenda.
It's next on the agenda. I didn't know if you were done, or?
Yes.
May I have any questions? Just great job facilitating.
Thank you. So in the resolution.
Is it in our packet?
No, I got it.
Oh, somebody, yeah, I have literally some tweets that I have to read. So here's the resolution. Whereas the Bridgeport Spalding Community Schools believe that the most significant purpose of our district is to provide our students with a solid foundation for a successful life, and whereas the Bridgeport Spalding Community Schools have been engaged in many initiatives to increase student achievement, with areas of success, but have yet to realize dramatic increases in student and teacher performance, and whereas the Bridgeport Spalding Community Schools, having been identified as having at least one priority school, and in need of support of the MyXL statewide system of support, and whereas the Bridgeport Spalding Community Schools has identified the stages for implementation, excuse me, installation of the Blueprint for systemic reconfiguration, and those that remain to be fully developed, and whereas the Bridgeport Spalding Community Schools unanimously supports the Blueprint for systemic reconfiguration, and expects its full and successful implementation to ensure the maximum educational experiences and future life choices for each child who enters our classroom. Now therefore be it resolved, as by the Board of Education as follows. The Board of Education of Bridgeport Spalding Schools directs the superintendent to ensure the urgent, appropriate, and successful installation of the Blueprint. The Board of Education of the Bridgeport Schools expects its administrators to join and support the superintendent's efforts to ensure the appropriate and successful installation of the Blueprint. The Board of Education and Bridgeport Spalding Community Schools expects its teachers and other staff members to work to ensure the appropriate, successful installation of the Blueprint. The Board of Education of the Bridgeport Schools encourages its students to engage in their education as fully as possible, to give their best effort in their studies, and to utilize all resources of the district that are provided, to ensure their best educational outcomes and future life opportunity. The Board of Education of the Bridgeport Spalding Community Schools encourages its families and community stakeholders to support the Blueprint installation at the benefit of the students we serve, the community of Bridgeport, and the future instability of the district. The Board of Education of the Bridgeport Spalding Schools directs the superintendent to ensure that matters which distract from the core principles of the Blueprint, such as student discipline matters, or compliance reporting, or other school district tasks, be dealt with swiftly and appropriately, so that the time, resources, and energy for all staff members can be expediently returned to the instruction of tenants of the Blueprint for systemic reconfiguration. And the rest is pretty standard, dissolved on this day.
Is there a motion to adopt the Blueprint as a resolution?
So.
Discussion? This is a very important step. It's important, there's a lot of work, time, and energy being put into this, and we don't want to see us, different board members or different superintendents saying, this is happening in the district, come in and say, no, we don't want to do this, scrap projects. We don't want to see that. And this is really, this is a resolution pretty familiar, similar to one of the districts that we're down with.
Yes, yes, in fact, it was taken, we, it had to be tweaked to a more appropriately fit Bridgeport, but for the most part, it is very similar.
Correct.
And because this is so important, this requires not just a secretary's signature, or not just a board president, but with the entire board. We have at least a majority here, five, and we appreciate your suggestion.
I would like to say something. Having sat at this table often since 1990, I'm going to tell you, part of my frustration is exactly what you said, that is, you have systems spotted up, and somebody comes in, and they go away. So, I am anxious to see something stick for a long time, because it's frustrating the staff, it's frustrating the board, to not have consistency from administration to administration, so I have my closing.
Appreciate it, Bob.
Any comments or questions?
I think this is so important, that we really need to share it with the community at some point, I don't know how you do that.
I think you show that through the results of our students, and that would be the best demonstration of the diversity.
Well, anytime, and this is where I'm important, seeing this, the community is named in this Blueprint as being a part of the nation, knowing they might also be part of this one.
In our back of school orientation, I know it will be mentioned, that's part of the plan, and we'll find other ways to make sure the community understands. Not to mention, we have, you know, this video right now, and that will be shot on, that will be on.
YouTube.
YouTube.
By morning.
By the morning. And we have a reporter here from the Bridgeport Health, so, yeah, to this start, making sure that the community, no, the community has to be a part of it.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay, anyone else?
We're both disappointed. Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris, yes. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson?
Yes. Okay, next up is the 2017-18 high school student handbook.
That would be a pretty big document to print, I believe it was emailed to us.
Did you look at one? You were, what, you had to come up and?
Any change, any significant changes that you want to highlight from the sort of?
Ah, I don't know if there's anything that is significantly, we had a couple of.
We had fractions from Class E to Dangerous Weapon, we added to Class E, perpetrated mace have become a little bit more of an epidemic, so we added that, named this specifically, theft, and we also order in the back, put our course offerings as well, so our students and parents all will have access to our course offerings at the back of that. Besides that, simple changes that maybe we tweaked a little bit.
And I think we changed class dues as well.
Class dues as well, yes.
We made it so that way you could, it'd actually be cheaper if you paid like upfront. Because part of the problem that we have with our seniors and our groups coming in is that we, we end up collecting all that money at graduation, but we need that money ahead of time to pay for like prom and, and other things. So we've kind of made it cheaper if you just pay upfront. Does that make sense? I think they were like twenty, twenty bucks, there'd be twenty-five bucks, and like twenty bucks if you pay upfront.
So if you pay for four years?
Yeah, that's what we're saying, yeah, that's kind of our hope, is if you, if you can come in and you pay at the beginning, in the fall, you pay for it, you're all done, and it'd be, it'll save you money in the long run, instead of collecting at, at the end.
So what are you going to do with students who want to pay and then do that retroactively?
I'm, I'm sorry, Bob, I can't hear you.
What about students who would want to, like, they're going to be sophomores, and will say, yeah, I'd like to do that retroactively?
Oh, just moving forward, wherever you are from the grade, so it's like twenty-five dollars for like each grade, and if you pay upfront, it's like twenty bucks.
Okay, so I'm junior, and I've already paid my twenty-five dollars three times?
But nobody's done that. That's been part, that's been part of the problem, is we, we don't have it.
It's the senior year, you're trying to collect before you're going to graduate.
That's, that's, that's part of our problem, is we're trying to get the money in, in upfront.
I understand, okay.
So am I not explaining it right?
No, I will.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It'll be uncheap if I pay up front.
Well, that's what we're hoping for. That's, that's, that's what we're hoping for, but we need, we need more people like that, we're trying, because again, we're not, this isn't like to try to make money.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, and so we just.
To help alleviate the stress of the environment.
And it allows this, it allows the kids to do more for them, because we end up collecting that before they graduate, and then that money goes to the.
The next one.
Yes, and so.
You mentioned.
Keep talking, go ahead, man.
And other things. Can you just talk about in general, using any kind of aerosol repellent device will be subject to that infraction?
I heard, I heard aerosol, I didn't hear the first part, I heard aerosol.
It's a part of aerosol repellent, okay? At the end of the day, you're getting real specific, and I hate to say this, but there are other things out there that students could bring in to have equal capability, only have to give a dollar for it.
Well, in, in, in one of the trains we went to, when you come up to getting into dangerous weapons, or for example, you talked about three and a half inch knife, or that, that you put over the board for expulsion, if it's not specific, it becomes a loophole. And when that becomes a loophole, and it's not specific in the handbook, and it, it creates an edge for the parent or someone else coming in, and they go in front of the board. So that was just one of the things that we did, we've seen that. Um, there is, we do have one, I believe in the Class E, that does say, um, using anything to be hazardous or hurt someone. So that would fall underneath it, but that pepper spray had become a more, I see it more and more and more and more. But I understand what you're saying with that.
But you think it's covered?
Yes, it is covered, it is covered into there, it is, yes.
And mainly our girls. It is, yeah.
With our bullying policy.
Yes.
And I know it's pretty much spelled out, bullying just really worries me so much. And I know kids bully one another, but we hear kids who actually take their lives because they've been bullied. And then you cannot say, but they went to the school, and they talked to the school, and the school said, you know.
We actually, with our PBIS has actually done wonders for our teachers and us, but not only that, Ms. Collins, Ms. Kemen has also done a really good job of bringing back restored justice, and we've adopted a lot of those as well. And so this year, working with her and Mr. Legala, we actually brought parents in on several of our conversations with other parents, and we sat down and met, and that's part of the restored justice thing. And if you talk to a lot of the parents and people in, in the community, you'll find out that they were a part of that, and they got a chance to see, really what's going on in interaction between their children and other children. So we are doing that. Um, it is, it is an issue, cyberbullying is an issue. A lot of them things are happening not on school or school related, it's happening outside of that. And we do much as possible to try to help them, parents and the students with that, but we are still legally only, only limited to what we can do when it takes place in school and in the building.
And I, I can say this honestly, Teddy, that it is, God forbid, it has happened, but we haven't had an incident like that here, and again, God forbid that, that it does, but I think a lot of it has to do with the job that Mr. Rodriguez and the staff do in building relationships with our kids, and they know that they can, they can find people that they can trust, and we do, we bring in, when it's, when it's brought to our attention, we do take it serious, we bring in the parents, you know, and, and again, it's, I just came back from Japan, and what is their biggest concern in the schools? Cyberbullying. You know, I mean, it's just, it's everywhere, and it's, it's not gonna go away, because it's easy to hide on the internet and say, say those mean things, and it's only, it's only gonna get worse. And so we're, a lot of the times, we're, we're coming in on Monday, dealing with the things that happened over the weekend, you know, from Facebook and Snapchat and other things that, that go on. But I think for the most part, we, we do a pretty good job, and again, it's, it's something that it's just, uh, it's, it's hard to always keep, keep control of it, I mean, it'd be 100% on top of.
Have you ever seen a profile of a child who has, is being bullied, how they, the characteristics of how they act in the classroom?
Absolutely. And we see that, and I know Mr. Rebecca sees that, and again, it's, it's a credit to our staff and the relationships that they build, but they, and then we have time with our staff, and they're talking about the students and, and constantly having those conversations, like, hey, did you see Tony, and, and what's going on, why is this, this happening? And then, you know, again, you dig in and you find out that these are the things going on. It goes back to relationships, and I think that is, that is probably our, our really, our greatest strength that we have here in this, in this building.
Because when I think back to, you know, in your high years, I guess you all probably would think back to maybe if you were bullied. I was so disfigured in my junior high years that I think I didn't even open my mouth for three years, because I was afraid I'd get beat up by somebody. And I never even thought to tell a teacher or my parents, but I know there's characteristic of most.
Absolutely.
Child is very important, that's not normal.
And I, and our hope is, is that when you get to know those kids, and you see the things that are abnormally, and they're being act wholly quiet, that you can build those relationships and figure out what's going on, so somebody could, could reach you and, and build that bridge to you, so that way you would be comfortable talking with them. And that takes trust, and that takes time.
I did come out of it.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the 2017-18 high school student handbook?
So.
Support. Motion to support, because we already had a discussion, but anything else on the topic?
Nice job, guys, thanks.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have a consent agenda that includes the minutes from the Monday, June 4, 2017 business meeting, and Monday, June 26, 2017 committee of the whole meeting, and the personnel report. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
Some.
Support? Discussion, would you please review the personnel report?
I suggest that we can. So, um, the personnel report includes a transfer of, you know, athletic secretary, Linda Rodriguez, retired, so we need very much to replace her. And so library H R Gadsden has been interviewed, and will be moving over to the high school main office to be combination main office secretary and athletic secretary. Additional assignments include at this time, and we have some working agreements that, are they in the packets or?
Mm-hmm.
packets, okay. Um, because you know, we are, we're in need of athletic director for both the high school and the middle school, or either one person or a combination. So we discussed in the personnel committee, having a kind of two people, one at the high school, one at the middle school. So Dave Rodriguez has agreed to take the helm of the high school assistant athletic director, and Matt Smith, who was not here tonight, but was very committed to be the middle school assistant athletic director, they both will be under the guidance of Principal John Legala. So Mr. Legala will be attending the TBC meeting in place of the athletic director, and making sure that the, our Mr. Smith and Mr. Rodriguez get all the information that they need. And I will say, even though the board has not formally approved the, this athletic director or assistant director position, I've seen them at work this summer already. You know, we can't have too much of a time gap in making sure that our athletic department's taken care of, and they've been fulfilling those positions very well. We have a few resignations and retirements, and those are on your report. We do have several positions still to be filled at high school, elementary, but we have them on board, two positions at Atkins, one at the middle school math, a high school, two math high school teachers, and, uh, just today, we got a resignation from one of our CI teachers, specialty teacher of cognitively impaired students, and so we have to post for that, and we have to post for a court case position. We're pretty sure that we have candidates that are willing to take the positions for at least Atkins. Yes, at least those two Atkins positions, and I'll bring those to you at our upcoming meeting, which is actually the first day of school, or first day of teaching to return, but we'll have those, at least those two for Atkins. Hopefully, we'll have all of them filled. We do now, on start our school year with substitute teachers, we, we will, we have to, but we're, the, the, the administrators are working really hard interviewing to make sure that we have those in place.
Any special questions?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson?
Yes. Next is November 7, 2017, special election, the second final resolution, discussion for adoption. Did you make that motion yet, because we have a right of receipt. Have you all read your resolution? Did that, not that?
No.
Do you want to review that?
Do you want to review it?
Well, kind of hard to ask for a motion if they have a good receipt.
I didn't, you didn't have copies when we went.
Hold on, do you have copies for your motion?
No, these are originals for to be submitted.
Do you want to read the?
Oh.
Do you have any screen resolution? Okay, this is the same resolution that was, that you approved back for the second election, this is the second one, we've been doing those over 10 years. And the resolution states, whereas this board intends to submit a proposition and a special election be held on Tuesday, November 7, 2017, honor before 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 15, the board shall certify any valid proposition to be submitted from orders at such elections to the election coordinator or board members designated to conduct elections in the district. Now therefore, it is resolved that for a special election, the school electors in the district be called and held on Tuesday, November 7, 2017, to the proposition before the special election, until we state on the ballot and substantially a form is set forth in the assembly. Three, the election coordinator is requested to utilize.
The Bridgeport Bertrand.
Bridgeport Bertrand, all newspaper published, or of general circulation within the district for publication of notices in accordance with the election law requirements. B, utilize valid proposition summary information as required by legal counsel in forms of notices the last day of registration, the election ordinance set forth in the assembly attached to. C, provide a copy of the ballot to the district against legal counsel in sufficient time to allow the ballot to be proofread prior to printing. Four, secretary of this board is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this resolution with the election coordinator, and with any election clerk or clerks designated to conduct elections in the district by 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 15, 2017. Five, all resolutions and parts of resolutions, as far as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, be and same right hereby rescinded. Let's prove it.
So that's tomorrow?
Yeah.
There's a motion to approve the November 7, 2017, special election, second final resolution.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Any questions, any discussion?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson?
Yes. Okay, next is the emergency seclusion or restraint policy discussion and adoption.
So in your packet is a letter from Trum Law, that is, and Mary Viking has said, this is actually something we, we must do before the beginning of school to revise or update our policy on seclusion and restraint of students that are discipline problems. And so they have included the language that they're recommending that we adopt and make it a board policy. I expect that, you know, Neola's still working on our, updating our policy, but this is just kind of a backup for us to formally adopt the policy as Trum has outlined it.
How is this done effectively, can you, is staffs, do they understand this policy and is it really acceptable?
So part of the requirement is that every building must have a team of teachers, staff members, not just teachers, that are trained in this. And so we've had some teachers trained, and so administrators trained, and I for one have still not been trained, but I'm going tomorrow to get the training. And then it will be conveyed to all of the staff as to what's allowed, what's not allowed. And this is also in your, in your packet too. We have to make sure that it's real clear to all the staff and the parents too, that there are certain things that we will and will not do, can and cannot do, in, in order to restrain a child who may need restraint.
I think it's always good also to share with staff in regards to the use of positive behavior interventions, what some of those are, that they are expected to do.
So you know, we've been using the PBIS program for the last couple of years, two years, and I think that's one of the systems that we are very successful in, especially at Atkins. All the students know the expectations, the teachers know the expectations, they spend a lot of time talking to the students about what's expected, and, and how to behave, not just in the classroom, but in the hallway, on the bus, in the lunchroom, in the bathroom.
How does that transfer to high school?
Same, same, we have PBIS here at the high school too. It's, you know, if you walk into an Atkins or a Thomas White, you see posters and stuff on the wall immediately. The high school is, is not quite as overt, but.
They have a year, head start on us, and then we followed suit with them. And so last year, we took, we really kind of took off. And so we're gonna be implementing, our freshmen coming in, when they have orientation, we'll have implementation for them that first day they come in, and as well as we're gonna have implementation for our staff again, reintroducing it again, coming up here on the 20. Anyway, with our teachers again, just.
That's on the 30th, but first day of school, we're going through all the lessons again.
And they're all done projector, we all have projector, so each one has access to, be able to, so we're all going over athletic events, everybody will, athletic events, and it'll be the same, they're getting the same thing from everybody.
So, so high school has PBIS also, and the, and the, there are expectations, I mean, they may be a little bit different, but at the high school, students are expected to behave a certain way in the hallway, in the classroom. And I think we've been very successful in our PBIS efforts, the number of suspensions have been reduced, the number of referrals have been reduced. We don't have teachers referring the student to the office because they don't have a pencil or people pay. They, you know, there's different levels of infraction, and, and teachers have been pretty respectful of that, and they can't, they, they know how to behave, and some of them, for whatever reason, just can't help themselves. And we do have incidents, fights and stuff, but all of that has been dramatically produced because everyone knows the expectations and try to respect, respect those expectations.
Discipline is a big piece of the problem, I'm sure.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt emergency seclusion or restraint policy?
Support.
Motion to support?
Support.
Show seclusion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson?
Yes. The next is the back of school fun fest, and back at giveaway.
And so John, I'm gonna let you piggyback with me on this, but Shively Brothers, I'm sorry?
No problem.
Okay. Right. Right. I didn't think about that. Shively Brothers, which is a tool, guy, company in the Bridgeport community is celebrating its 70th anniversary this year. its seventieth anniversary this year. And they actually contacted a teacher over at Atkins to ask how they could give back to the community and do it through the school district. Well, of course, all they had to do was just hook us up. And John has been our contact person, meeting with Shively, and they're very excited to both celebrate their seventieth anniversary and give back to the community, to the community and the school.
So, John, would you share with them real quick?
It's really been a very organic and just wonderful experience, and it's, it's really been the dedication and caring of the Shively team. And it's just been one thing after another where they have added, and it's, it's really grown legs, and it's going to be a whole carnival atmosphere, and they're going to give away backpacks and school supplies once they found out that the one group that was doing it for the last several years just wasn't able to. And once they found that out, they wanted to continue the giving and the generosity, and then they tie that into their seventieth picnic that they're having. And so, when you come out on the twenty-sixth, you're going to see almost like a mini version of Bridge Fest. But just for a couple hours and geared just towards kids, I mean, you, you name a kind of carnival event, and they're, they're bringing it in. And it's all free for, for us as a school. They're going to sell tickets and any of the, just to like, you know, for like certain, you know, things, like, because you're just not going to throw balls at me for free in the dug tag, you know? You're not going in there. It's going to, it's going to cost, you know, you something. So, but, you know, and then any of the proceeds, they're going to give back to the high school, and then there's another organization that they're tied with as well. And so, we have teachers and students coming in, but Shively has also just been incredibly generous. You know, we have a, Mr. Kemp, who's just an unbelievable human being, a teacher, you know, has compiled like a wish list, a project lead the way. He gave that to them, and they're sitting going, oh, we can get you, oh, we got this, we can get you this. And so, their generosity has just been overwhelming, and they have, they just want to give back. And so, please, if you are around the twenty-sixth, from, from two to five, stop out, see what they're, what they're doing, and what they're doing for the families, and, you know, the, the kids, to get them started off on the right foot here to have a good school year. Yeah, it's going to be right across from, from the high school. That's why I'm saying here, familiar with Bridge Fest, this is going to be, not quite Bridge Fest, but it's, it's going to be just that kind of, yeah, that kind of carnival atmosphere. And, and again, please come in and, and I know Rebecca will come in and throw, and try to dunk me. She's already, I think it's like ten bucks, she already said she, she willing to spend. And so, please, you know, it's, it's going to be, it's just good. You'll see a lot of our teachers and students giving back as well, love with Shively. And so, it's just, it's been a lot of fun. And it's really been from the bottom of their heart, it's been, it's been true love for them, like wanting to give something back. And it's really been, it's like, I know I'm repeating myself, but I've been, I've been very overwhelmed and humbled by their organization, their discipline, and their generosity. And those people, we've met a lot because those people are organized. There's a reason they've been around for seventy years. It's, they are, they are on top of their stuff, so.
Okay, next is board superintendent comments.
Thank you, everyone, for all the information you've given.
Happy summer.
It's almost over.
I know, and I'm about to cry.
I'd like to thank everybody as well for all the information. It came in, it kind of brought out, didn't think it, I did absorb everything you did, so it had to be due to your presentations, because it was important.
I'm looking forward to a great school year coming up. A great anticipation, very much appreciate what's been laid down this framework, and look forward to follow through on the rest of the school year. Very excited about the possibilities and challenges that we have coming up, so thank you.
I want to echo those, those comments. Thank you for coming in and being part of the meeting and the presentation, too, you should add leave. But the blueprint is important, and it's going well. I think it's going well. And I can't make every meeting, but every time I'm there, if I miss a meeting or two, I see progress. So, not so sure, sometimes I think stepping away and not missing a meeting does have a benefit, can I get to see the progress that we made. So, that's good. I think we're in a great year. Thanks for updating the handbook and taking care of some issues and responsibilities and stuff. The, what Shively is doing is awesome. It started out as something simple, and they've grown, as I saw a need here in Bridgeport. And they are a great company. They've been here their entire time. They've put out, over on my leave, I always want to treat them like, and great, great company. They treat their employees really well. I know them from the time I worked at Bridgeport, so, good organization, so it's really great that they stepped up. So, all of us, I'll be out there to ask for their folks, and I saw that a lot. You can also be out as board members. Great opportunity to talk to some of our parents, if they have questions about the village or anything else going on in the district as well, or something that Bridgeport tried on.
Okay. So, in your packet, there's a district, a district update list from me, and I won't go over everything on here. I know you can read, but I do just want to highlight a few things here. If you watch W N E M TV size, you probably saw, hopefully this weekend, where they've been running commercials featuring interviews, pictures of staff and students from Bridgeport Public Community School. And it's a pretty nice commercial, and we're really excited about it. We've also been in a line of marketing, we've been doing some, we have some yard signs in several locations. We have a couple of big portable signs up. So, we're, we're marketing, in one way I can tell that our marketing is working. I don't have all the numbers for you, but there has been a steady spring of families coming in to enroll their, their children in the last couple of weeks. I, if I'm in the office, when I see parents come in, I like to connect with them, shake their hand, talk to them. I talked to three parents today. One was a parent bringing in four students, and she was so passionate about, she had to get her children out of the other situation that they were in. I had to give her a big hug because she was crying and everything. I need my children in a safe, secure, and loving environment. I said, will you pick the right place? And I'm going to give you a hug. And I, and I'm just real excited. And I talked to another mother who was bringing three children, and she said, I've been trying to get over here for the last two weeks, and she's in. And it's just, it's heartwarming to see the number of families that are choosing Bridgeport schools for whatever reason. And I'm assuring everyone that I get a chance to talk to, that they have made the right choice, and that we will take care of their child, and will provide that nurturing environment along with the astrotectonics environment. So, really excited about that. Project Lead the Way, Mr. Legallo and Mr. Kemp have been pounding the pavement to get donations to help support our Project Lead the Way lab. Now, you know, we've had Project Lead the Way for the last couple of years, and it's been not hands-on lab work. Now we're at the point where we have to equip our lab, and that financially is more than a notion. And so, they've been out soliciting donations. John, want to tell us real quick about the donation?
Yeah, again, this is a, I wouldn't say we're all, so again, just like with Shively, it was incredibly organic and, and giving. This, this really came from Jordan Teeny and, and with amigo. And he was very incredibly active at the school. He runs a leadership group. He has just been very inspired. I, I really believe, well, I know he is, and it's really, again, due to the effort he sees when he comes in, you know, with, with, again, guys like Mr. Becca and Mr. Rodriguez, and, and what he sees in the school. So, he has been giving, and, and it's one of those things where, again, Mr. Kemp came up with the, the list of, of things that we need for Project Lead the Way, and one of them was a CNC machine. And it was fifteen thousand dollars for the CNC machine. And, and so, Jordan's looking at this going, CNC machine, fifteen thousand? Well, let me look at what machine you're looking at buying, Chance. And Ken shows him, it's garbage. You know, that's, that's like, I mean, yeah, fifteen thousand, he goes, let, let me see what I can do. And so, Beth calls me up one day and says, Legallo, you need to, you need to come in, I, I got something for you. And so, I, I sit down, and what they have purchased and what they went out, is they're going to buy the best CNC machine, because actually, and again, I, I know I'll get criticized for, for talking too much, but there's a whole story that, that we need to, that we need to paint. So, this summer, we have been going out and meeting with all these different people in education, out at different conferences at S B S U, where there is a shortage of machinists, and there is a shortage of skilled trade. And they're, they're, they're dying for us to, to produce this. And so, one of the things that they're short is they need people who know how to operate a real, the real CNC machine. And so, Jordan goes out and gets this, and this is about a fifty thousand dollar machine. And the things that they're going to be able to do, I don't, ask those guys, okay? I, I can't even tie my shoes. So, let alone figure, figure these things out. So, but what he has gone out and, and said and done is, this is the machine, and once we took this out, like, to other machinists, and even Shively, they're like, that's what you guys are buying? You guys are getting that? They're like, oh, man. And like, they're, I mean, they're like, you're going to have that in your building? You're going to have kids trained? We'll hire them right away. We'll, we'll, you guys, we'll hire them right away. And, and so, it's, it's a direct pipeline for, but again, benefits our families and our kids, and what Bridgeport truly is, and we understand who we are. And so, again, it's, it's gone out. And what Jordan did then, because this is a, is a machine, and he, he knew the value of, of getting it. In fact, he said, he goes, I guarantee, there's no other school in the country that has this. The only, the only places that, that are going to have this are like college-level tech schools. And so, you guys do this with Project Lead the Way, and you continue to build what we're, we're hoping to build with, with G M C A, and, and we're going to, we're going to build something that's certainly unique. And, and so, what he's done is he went out and he did this. He contacted Merrill Technologies, the Michigan Manufacturing, and the Great Lakes Bay Manufacturing, P F Markey, the, obviously amigo, next tier, Endurance Carby, Duralast Roofing. And they've all given the school, they've all given us five thousand dollars, and towards the machine. So, obviously, the one thing they asked too, when this whole thing started, they're like, Legallo, look, we need, we need to make sure that you have skin in the game. So, it's a fifteen thousand dollar machine, if you guys, and that's what you budgeted for, if you put in five.
Forty thousand, not fifteen thousand.
No, it is, the fact that it was a fifteen thousand dollar machine, that's what we had budgeted. You know, the fact is, if you had the budget for fifteen, if you put five in the game, we'll get you the, the better machine. But we want to make sure that you're into this and have skin in the game. And I, yes, sir. You know, and so, we have five thousand dollars towards it. So, again, last I knew, they'll tell you I'm not that smart, and, and Kathy will tell you I'm not that well-spoken. Last I knew, fifteen thousand, five thousand, that's ten thousand dollars cheaper. And so, we're going to save, we're going to get a machine that we can get for our kids, and it's something I think that we can have that hook and things that we can be proud of here at, in Bridgeport High School, and, and continue to build for, for our kids. So, it really is, it's a Jordan thing, and it became all these other local businesses. And again, so I'm just very excited when you see the amount of caring and giving that is out there, when you talk to people, and it comes off genuine and, and passionate people out there in our community, and they just need to be talked to. So, I'm, I'm really excited. So, this is a next tier thing, and it's all these other businesses. And we're going to have a, now we got to figure out how we're going to get this sucker in, because it's, it's pretty big. But those are good comments to have. So, I.
We'll figure it out.
Yes, we'll figure it, yes, we'll figure, I'm not, I wasn't going to say no.
Yeah, just, just, I'm working on that.
I'm going to ask that when we get this thing in and operation, we have some sort of celebration or acknowledge those folks' contributions, and I would really like the board to be invited to make sure that they understand, just know that we appreciate what they've done.
There's a couple of things that, that Beth and I have talked about too. On the machine itself, we want to put all the donors on the machine itself. And also, in that Project Lead the Way room, Mr. Kemp and I have talked about putting, like, up there in like big gold, and, you know, like, hey, these are the people, because I want our kids to come in and understand that are part of Project Lead the Way. Look, you're here because these people have given and sacrificed for you to have this opportunity. So, we need to certainly be, have that attitude of gratitude towards, towards, you know, the, the communities and the businesses that are, you know, supporting.
Now, who do we have to train at the agency?
What's that?
Who do we have?
Here's, it's Mr. Kemp, and again, this is, what you just talked about is a huge part to this, this puzzle, this piece. We can have all this great machinery, and we can put in this lab. If it's not for Mr. Kemp, we don't have this. We, we don't have this. And so, when we talk about the talent management piece, you know, it's, it's a gentleman like Mr. Kemp that, that needs to get the, the respect he, he is due. And, and, and he chooses to, to want to be a part of this district. He lives in Bridgeport, the guy is just, he's here at six a.m., you know, he will be Gabe and I here. And so, when you, when you see Mr. Kemp, and, and. Mr. Kemp, he is our Project Lead the Way teacher.
Oh, that's.
And so, I'm sorry for, for not explaining, but he's our Project Lead the Way teacher, but he is trained on it. He is trained on it. And, and so, you know, he's just an unbelievable human being and guy. You know, don't be afraid if there's birds living in his beard, the guy is just, he's unbelievable. So, he's a huge piece. We can't do this without him.
That's great.
What are you doing next time you're around the winner?
He's inviting a co-creator.
I got my call.
A couple of other things on, on the updates. While we'll get an invitation for, is it August thirty?
For the.
Twenty, no, no.
Forty-eight.
The kickoff.
That's the twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth, the welcome back breakfast.
Well, welcome, welcome back breakfast, that's on the twenty-eighth, that's the first day the teachers will be. So, you'll get an invitation to that real soon. You will also get an invitation to our kickoff, November mileage campaign, meeting, breakfast, next, that's on the thirty.
Twenty-ninth, that's it.
Twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth, the next day. And so, the plan is to kick off the campaign by inviting current board members, former board members, community members, and invite, tell them what we're doing with our sinking fund campaign, what we need to do, and how we could use their support, and form a formal committee to get that going. And we will kick that off on the twenty-ninth. So, you will get an invitation to that, and they'll probably be, not sure exactly where, on the twenty-ninth. It'll be the cafeteria or be in the library.
We weren't invited by the official, between the person.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, Vanessa, Ken, Ken Horn, if you can think of, and we have, we can invite several community members, those who think, those who we think would be interested and willing to support us one way or another. Speaking of Senator Ken Horn, he is, Senator Horn is securing funding to put reading tutors from the Reading Core, Michigan Reading Core, in two buildings in Saginaw County, and he has chosen Atkins Elementary to be one of the buildings that will be getting these two reading tutors. And these tutors will be with us for a minimum of two years, and will work under, under the direction of the new K-three literacy coach that will be coming through the I S D. So, we're really excited about, so this will be a new partner, a divisional partner for us, and I, I think we could use that extra support for our students, especially since we have the new third grade reading initiative, doing everything that we can to support our students, to make sure that they're successful academically in the area of reading. You have calendars in your packet, and the calendar is pretty standard. One big difference of the calendar, in order to support the academic professional development for our teachers, we are, will be implementing, beginning October eleventh, late start Wednesdays. And so, on those Wednes, every Wednesday during the school year, beginning October eleventh, our teachers, the students will be coming late, the teachers will be recording during the. our teachers, the students will be coming late, the teachers will be recording during their regular time. And every building will be engaging. We will have a rotating schedule of either professional learning communities, PLCs, some kind of professional development, or a staff meeting. And the reason for that is to, you know, we do those things usually after school. We don't not always get 100% participation. As part of our putting our systems in place, we want to make sure that every teacher can take advantage of the PLC support that we will be providing. Actually, they do the work in the professional learning community. We don't, it's not a sitting yet. They work together on ways to improve academic achievement and then professional development. And we're waiting until October 11th to make sure that we have ample time to let our families know that the schedule will be different on Wednesdays in October 11th. Just one other thing, although we will not be, Bridge Fest is no longer in existence. The haunted elementary is still alive and well. And we just signed a one-year building use permit for them to use the Schlup here property. Doing pretty much what they've been doing in the past, to do the haunted elementary. And they'll be paying a monthly fee, pretty lucrative, but pretty substantial fee. Haunted houses apparently are pretty big, they're big business from what I've been told. And they want to continue that in our community. And they're willing to make a commitment, sign an agreement with them. Then after a year, we'll reconsider and make it a little bit more formal. But we've got other challenges to play.
Those who are from the disposal of the building to write off, we think they're in a way.
Oh, absolutely not, right.
And they're all.
Our building, yes.
You satisfied to make sure this?
Yes, we definitely. We looked at that, we know that they met the fire chief to make sure that they were. Make sure that they were up to code in terms of evacuation plans and fire safety and all. So we're pretty happy about that involvement in the community. And just the last thing on the 22nd, we will have a former Bridgeport High School student, Bridgeport grad, Aramis Dunell and Yala, who is the Florida State Attorney. I always say, I always want to say Attorney General, it's comfortable, Attorney General. Some of you might know the Dunell family, and she will be, she's coming back to the area that we can speak at the end of L A C T banquet, but she'll be coming on that Friday, September 22nd to speak to Bridgeport High School students. We're very proud and excited to be able to host Aramis, and happy that she's cleared her schedule with her family on that day to visit her alma mater.
She has got some very fans.
Yes, she has got fans, very fans. Yeah, to do a school on her name. Now, that's all that I have. And of course, thank you very much, Board, for supporting and approving the blueprint. We're very excited about continuing to do the work. And I'm very happy that once I am no longer superintendent, that the work will continue. Thank you very much to the ISD for your information. We are always so appreciative of all the support that the ISD provides, and we know that we'll continue to provide. And.
Hopefully it brings all the.
Oh, and by the signature, so don't. And thank you to everyone else who took their time out of their hot summer day to come stick with us. And our board members. And I think that's all. And of course, if you have any questions, concerns, you know, I don't need you. You are a journey.